In essence of time, since we're doing this for one hour, I'm going to get us going. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the YVSC Route County Commissioner Candidate Sustainability Forum. It is a pleasure to be able to gather here with you all, Commissioner candidates, and valued community partners and members to identify and discuss the pressing sustainability and environmental issues facing our community and region today as a lead up to this year's election. I'm Michelle Stewart, the Executive Director of Yampa Valley Sustainability Council, and it's my privilege to moderate this important and timely forum. YVSC was established as a nonprofit in 2009 and is guided by the mission to serve as a leader, resource, and catalyst for building a sustainable and resilient Yampa Valley region. We convene these candidate forums because we and so many of our county's organizations and entities work in close partnership with one another and with our local government to collaboratively advance sustainability and climate-aligned initiatives in impactful and inclusive ways. Our government decision-makers matter to us, to our work, and to the successes ahead. This educational forum is thus an opportunity for our county commissioner candidates to clarify and state how their approaches to key sustainability issues, as we collectively define them, distinguish their platforms. The recent adoption of the Route County Climate Action Plan and the recent updating of the Route County Master Plan make this a particularly important time for effective leadership to ensure that the county leads by example as we navigate dynamic environmental, social, and economic conditions. Before we get going into the forum, I'll provide a few clarifications and guidelines for the discussion. There will be nine questions posed during the forum today, each of which will be asked by the partner organization or entity that works in the environmental and sustainability sphere and which has developed the questions based on the issues that are salient to them in their work. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the questions, and there will be a hard stop on time to allow for equal floor time for both candidates. When a candidate begins the response, we will start a two-minute timer that will show on the screen. At 30 seconds remaining, an audible tone will sound. Candidates, when you hear the tone, please start wrapping up your points, and I apologize in advance if I have to mute you to move on to the next candidate, but our time is limited and we do want to ensure that there's equal floor time. The nine questions that we will ask live during the forum have been selected from a range of questions that were submitted to YVSC by community members and partners. Due to time limitations, we were not able to ask all of them that were submitted, but we will send all questions that have been submitted to us to date, as well as those that are posted in the chat today, to the candidates after the forum. Attendees, if you would have questions that you'd like to ask the candidates, please post them in the chat and we will send them over. If you'd like a response, please include your contact information. We will be monitoring the chat, and we at YVSC will remove any offensive or inappropriate comments should the need occur. We, as a community, are inclusive and respectful, and we abide by these values and norms today. This forum will be recorded and made available to all registered attendees and the public via YouTube. We are pleased to have the Steamboat Pilot with us here today, so all comments, chats, and responses are publicly accessible information. As usual, please keep your microphones muted when you're not speaking, and without further ado, let's get this great discussion going. So first, I'll turn the floor over to Tim Woganon, who will be speaking on behalf of the Yes for Water, Wildlife, and Working Ranches Campaign in support of Route County Referendum 1A, the Reauthorization of the Purchase of Development Rights Program. There is no formal opposition to 1A, otherwise we would have offered a competing view. Though YVSC does not endorse candidates, and no candidate will be endorsed during this educational forum today, YVSC does occasionally endorse ballot measures and has endorsed 1A. So, Tim, it's my pleasure to welcome you to the floor.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you all today about referendum 1A. That's the one I want you to remember. I am here as a private citizen. I am appointed by the county to the Purchase of Development Rights Board, but I'm here just speaking with you as a private citizen and not as a representative of any organization. And so I want to start with a question. How many times have you returned from a trip outside of Route County and, upon descending the west side of Rabbiteer's Pass, just marveled at the breathtaking view of open, mostly undeveloped agricultural land stretching toward the flat tops? You can thank the wisdom of Route County voters from 26 years ago for that view. Route County's Purchase of Development Rights, or PDR, program was started in 1996, and since then has permanently protected over 56,000 acres of private land, much of that land on the valley floor. The program is up for reauthorization, so the county commissioners referred the measure to the ballot as referendum 1A. Twenty-six years ago, the citizens of this county recognized the need to prevent unplanned development from spoiling the precious open lands of the county, as well as to support a culturally and economically significant sector, agriculture. They developed the PDR program to do that. So how does it work? Well, funding comes from a one-and-a-half mil property tax. Nonprofit land conservation organizations then apply to the program on behalf of landowners who are interested in selling a property's development rights, which is done using a perpetual conservation easement. By purchasing conservation easements, the program protects important natural resources, wildlife habitat, working agricultural lands, scenic views, recreational opportunities, and ultimately, the character of our county. The program only provides a portion of the total funding needed. Landowners, on average, donate about half of the appraised value of the easement, with a quarter of the funding coming from federal, state, and local agencies. Purchase of Development Right funds have thus been leveraged to secure about $3 for every $1 of county funds. The PDR program has been reauthorized once already, when it first sunsetted in 2005. While it has already accomplished a lot, as we all know, the development pressure has never been stronger in our county. There are many private lands that, if subdivided for development, would significantly impact wildlife corridors, views, and, of course, take valuable working ag land out of production. This is not a new program nor a new tax, so I hope you'll all support it. The program plays a really important role in preserving some of the qualities that make our community special. Referendum 1A, that's again what I want you to remember. It's the last measure on the ballot, so please don't miss it and vote yes. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Tim. Okay, at this time, it's my great pleasure to welcome our Route County Commissioner candidates to the floor. A coin toss determined order, so first we'll have Sonia Macy's and then Kathy Meyer, both of whom will give one-minute self-introductions stating their name and why they are running for Route County Commissioner. Sonia.
Thank you, Michelle. I don't see the timer working, so I'm just going to use my own. I'm Sonia Macy's, and I'm running for Route County Commissioner. And in case you haven't noticed, we've been discovered as a community, and the decisions that we make today are really going to determine our quality of life into the future. I believe that I have a skill set that's very complementary to the current county commissioners and that I've had 30 years of land use planning experience that specifically incorporates how to preserve natural and cultural resources, maintain wildlife corridors and crossings, and also, of course, preserve our western water resources. So I think that's a skill set that is needed at the county level today, given the growth that we've seen, the properties changing hands from legacy families to newcomers. So I'd like to work to maintain our working agriculture, open lands, natural resources, and at the same time, put into place the things that we need as a local workforce, which, of course, I think we all know, are affordable housing, access to childcare, access to broadband, equitable access to broadband. Thank you, YVEA, for being on this call. And, of course, healthcare and transportation options. And I think we're going to talk about that later, so thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much, Sonia. And now Kathy Meyer.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Meyer, and I'd like to ask you a question. What job skills are necessary to be a highly effective county commissioner? The job should be administrative, like a board director of a large corporation, not political. A good commissioner represents all of Route County, not just one political party, issue, or geographic section. She will be well-versed in land use issues, sensitive to the local environment, and a strong student of financial management. I've spent the last 27 years serving Route County and 21 years in local government, including 15 years on the Steamboat Springs Planning Commission, six years on the City Council, and 17 years on the Yampa Valley Housing Authority. I'm motivated to continue my public service and would be honored to represent all of Route County as your commissioner.
Great. Thank you so much, Kathy. And now we will lead into our questions. So first up, we'll have Virginia.
Thank you. My name is Virginia Harmon, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Yampa Valley Electric Association. Thank you, guys, for giving me the chance to ask this important question today. So first off, my question will be given to Kathy, and then Sonia, you'll answer it second. So the question is, in the effort to reduce emissions, one of the energy strategies listed in the Route County Climate Action Plan is to promote fuel switching, i.e. electrification, with an additional action to ensure that the county, the city, and the towns across Route County lead by example. How will you lead by example in transitioning from natural gas to electricity for the space heating in new and existing county buildings? And how will you encourage others to do the same? Kathy?
I think that it's very important to lead by example, and the first thing I would do is encourage the county to continue the transition for their vehicle fleet to hybrid or fully electric vehicles. And I know that the market is, as far as manufacturing vehicles, is maturing, and we have needs for trucks and heavy-duty equipment. And perhaps today, they're not available, but they will be in the future. As far as looking for opportunities to be energy-efficient, when we look to retrofit or develop new buildings, I think we should be looking for opportunities for renewable energy. And, of course, included in that is a cost analysis. I think we saw the city go through something similar when they were analyzing the new city hall for hydro, not hydroelectric, but heat pumps. And I think we have to look at all of the above in terms of transitioning away from fossil fuels. Thank you very much.
All right, Sonia.
Well, I think everybody here knows that I'm a big proponent of beneficial electrification, and I'm thrilled to have just recently received my own electric vehicle that is powered by 100% solar and renewable energy at my home, thanks to Yampa Valley Electric Association. While I was on the YVA board, having transitioned off just this past June, we developed a beneficial electrification study and implementation actions that can be taken. So one of the things that I would do as a county commissioner is look to YVEA to help us lead the way. Some of the things that we've talked about have included the Brown Ranch and possibilities for that to be an example into the future of how electrification is the way to go. When we talk about fuel conversions, sadly, in the Climate Action Plan, we got pretty skinny on specific actions. I went back and referred to it, and we really didn't put a lot of specificity in there. So I think what we need to do, if we're talking specifically about fuel conversion from gas to electric in existing buildings, is we need to look back like we did with the Machinistry Study at the county level and analyze the existing buildings to look for opportunities. For example, the airport just did that in some level by looking at what they need into the future and installing a pretty large-scale renewable project. There may be opportunities to do something like that as well at the fairgrounds. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but they just started doing a little bit more of a robust camping and winter storage for vehicles, and they're really trying to encourage additional uses of the fairgrounds. So we might be able to think about what are the fuel sources that are being used there, and how could we look at conversion? I don't think I could fully answer with specific actions until I look at what the county's buildings are, what the fuel sources for each of those are, and how we might be able to replace those, obviously looking at biggest bang for our buck and biggest climate action impact. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle Meyer, you have the next question.
Great. Thank you so much, Michelle. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Michelle Meyer. I'm the Executive Director at Community Agriculture Alliance. Thanks so much for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. Our question from the Community Ag Alliance references the Route County Master Plan. The updated master plan reinforced that agriculture is a valued part of our community. In the face of both environmental and economic challenges, such as the ongoing drought, variable climate, increasing real estate land values, on and on, how can agriculture remain viable? And what would you, as our county commissioner, do to support local ag producers in Route County? I think Sonia, you're first for this question, and then Kathy. Thank you.
Sonia, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. It was a challenging year last year for us with the drought in particular, and I took an opportunity to tour some ranches and talk to some ranchers about their future. And basically, last year's theme was, you know, if something doesn't change, I'm out next year. I'm just not going to be able to make it. Unfortunately, we saw a very different year this year. So when we look at drought, I mean, we really have to just fully take on the big-picture issues related to climate change that we know are causing things like drought and wildfire. Those are the most visible impacts that we see here. One of the other things that we need to do to protect our agriculture is prevent water speculation. Sadly, there was a task force assembled to look at water speculation, and how do we protect ourselves from it, and they came up with inconclusive evidence. So we need to keep working on that front. Even in the Colorado Water Plan, it's specified that agriculture and supporting local foods is important. So I think that the work of the Community Ag Alliance, which is connecting the producers to the end customer, is incredibly important, and I've seen it grow over time. Just so proud to actually even have been a part of it. I actually sold some stuff on the market from my urban farmstead, which is wonderful. So I'd like to see the small-scale supporting of local agriculture and connecting it more with our community, with restaurants, really making it worthwhile for local producers to keep their foods local, and I think even extending into our local schools. So factions are going to need to be large and small, but I definitely support working agriculture. I see it as a really important part of our future, and I think the reauthorization of the Purchase of Development Rights Program is going to play a key role in that. So I hope everybody will vote for that. I've written a letter to the editor to encourage it, and I hope you will join me in voting yes on 1A. Thank you.
I think Kathy, you can just go next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would agree that the Purchase of Development Rights is an absolute must to support the ongoing economic viability of agriculture in our community. I don't know what the county can do in terms of changing the economic landscape. In other words, stop the increasing real estate values and, you know, discourage speculation. But the county can certainly continue with its support of ag, not only with the PDR program, but continuing to support the CAA market, buying local products, supporting restaurants that serve ag to table. And I think that this is something that I will champion if I'm elected as your county commissioner.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. And thank you particularly to Kathy and Sonia for stepping up in this way. My name is Tim Sullivan. I'm the Resilient Land and Water Director for YVSC and happy to ask a question also about the Route County Master Plan. The Master Plan and the Climate Action Plan both have a clear goal that future growth should be directed toward designated future growth areas. You both have just endorsed continuation of the PDR program. But in addition to that critical tool, what other actions and policies would you support to help meet the goal of directing future growth toward the defined growth areas? And we will have Kathy go first and then Sonia.
Thank you, Tim. I believe that the Master Plan clearly identifies two areas of future growth, and I think the county needs to take a look at supporting infrastructure, specifically Stagecoach. We need to make our roads, especially County 14, safe by doing more frequent snow plowing and wider shoulders to make transportation safe between Steamboat, where the jobs are, and Stagecoach, which is an identified growth area. The other area is the west of Steamboat, and we've seen the county act in a positive manner by recently granting $1 million towards the development of Brown Ranch. Brown Ranch will provide needed housing on the west side. And I think we all know, right now, we have a housing crisis, and I would like to see our county make sure that we support housing development because it's important to create neighborhoods that support our workforce. Without our workforce, we don't have a healthy economy. So my, again, my focus would be on development and improvement of infrastructure in both Stagecoach and West Steamboat.
All right. Well, I'll start with the idea that when we look at growth, we want to really support the municipalities that want that growth. And I think Kathy identified one that is important, which is Stagecoach, of course, but the other really is Hayden. And so one of the things that a county commissioner can do is, as liaison to state government, the county commissioners can help these municipalities connect with opportunities to grow in the way that they want to. And a recent good example, I think, is the Hayden Business Park, really helping to secure some funding for that community to transition away from coal communities into something else and something that has a lot of promise for them. When we talk about Stagecoach, that's an area that really I could see the county getting much more involved with. And as a person who owns a lot in Stagecoach, I know how difficult it is to negotiate the water situation out there. People just don't quite understand how to get well permits, how to get ball permits. Where do they go? Who do they go to? So I think it's important for the county to start to think about incentivizing areas they want to see grow and maybe reducing some of the barriers to people getting in there and building on those lots because that will help not just the development being in appropriate placing, but also it will help the development of appropriate infrastructure. So in case you're not aware, Morrison Creek Water and Sanitation District, you know, has a lot of capacity for service and, at the same time, a lot of empty lots. And they're struggling with that challenge. And the county could get in and help incentivize people to get in there and build and support that infrastructure. Lastly, I think it's important that the county take care of its existing water and wastewater infrastructure. Wastewater is what we return to the system, to the Yampa River, and it is critically important that it be treated well. And sadly, our infrastructure is aging. Sheriff's Reservoir, providing water to Oak Creek, where I am right now, is failing. And so we need to start to make bigger investments in the things that people need to live safely, like water and wastewater shooting.
Hello, candidates. My name is Drew Peterell. I am the Director of the Colorado Water Program for Trout Unlimited. Over the past 20 years, Route County has been experiencing more frequent drought, decreasing winter snowpack levels, and warming summer temperatures. These conditions present a number of challenges to Route County's economy and our quality of life. For example, because of low stream flows and warm water temperatures, the city of Steamboat Springs and Colorado Parks and Wildlife have closed sections of the Yampa River to recreational uses in almost every summer in recent memory. Closing the river harms businesses that rely on it, and it impacts Route County residents and visitors alike who would like to enjoy it. Drought also threatens water availability for irrigated farms and ranches that are an extremely important part of Route County's economy and our culture. With these phenomena in mind, what do you think the county should do to protect our water supplies and our quality of life in a warmer and drier environment? Sonia, it's your turn to respond first.
Okay, I want to talk about flows, and I want to talk about temperature. So on my first term in City Council, we negotiated with the Colorado Water Trust and started the Strategic Release Program to release water out of Stagecoach Reservoir to keep the river alive. That actually has turned into a very popular program and actually was the catalyst, to some degree, for the starting of the Yampa River Fund, which I'm really proud to have been a part of starting, and it's provided significant funding to keep the river alive through these releases. The city of Steamboat Springs has 552 acre-feet in Stagecoach that it can use for these types of things. And my question to the county has been, does the county have water rights that could be used for river health? And I believe the answer is no. So when we look at the fact that we have these flow problems, Stagecoach remains largely underallocated. So the county could, should it decide, get involved in these types of river releases, could acquire some water rights for that purpose. And when it comes to the temperature issue, you know, this is really important. My first trip to any facility when I was a City Council member first term was to the wastewater treatment plant. Why? Because if we release hot, dirty things into our river, we contribute directly to not preserving its health. So the city of Steamboat Springs has done some innovative work with trying to use shading for cooling the river, obviously in partnership with State Forest Service, Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. But we need to continue these types of innovative programs for river health because the alternative is installing $15 million cooling towers. So I'm pretty focused on that wastewater infrastructure, and the county has its own wastewater treatment plants in Milner and Phippsburg. And so the question is, as we're looking at upgrading plants, can we pull together and all work together on this for the benefit of river health?
Thank you. I think, to answer the question, what should the county be doing? I think the issue is a three-legged stool. We have to convene and facilitate the ag usage and see if there's any possibility of working together to make sure that we maximize the water as it's used by ag users as it returns to the Yampa River. As Sonia mentioned, the Stagecoach release has been very instrumental towards adjusting not only flows but temperature. And what this comes down to is money. And it costs money to maintain all these programs. I think it's an appropriate use of county funds to continue to focus on this area because it's important to keep and maintain our ag industry, our recreation that we have, not just fishermen today, but paddlers, kayakers, canoeists, river rafters, and then finally, just the general economic impact of the Yampa River as it flows through town. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dakota Dolan. I'm the Zero Waste Coordinator with YVSC. And our question for the candidates is, the Route County Climate Action Plan has a target to divert 46% of materials from the landfill by 2030, which is more than five times our current diversion rate of 9%. The challenges that we face in Route County include privatized waste systems, including the privately-owned landfill and haulers, long distances to markets, and high material transportation costs, high contamination rates, and lack of universal access to recycling. Similar resort communities with more robust waste diversion programs and publicly funded facilities like Pitkin, Summit, and Eagle Counties have diversion rates three to four times higher than ours. Given these challenges in our community models, how do you think Route County can best increase waste diversion from 9% to 46% in eight short years? And we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you very much. You know, I spent 15 years in California between 1980 and 96, and recycling was second nature. And I wonder, and I ask myself, why do we have such a low diversion rate? And I think about back then, there was no single stream. We actually sorted recycles based on value, and we had separate bins. When I first got to Steamboat, we had a similar program. So my question is, we need to work with, well, my question is, do we need to go back to some? we need to work with, well, my question is, do we need to go back to something so that we don't have degradation in the single stream, specifically glass? And I know this has been very controversial. But there are, there are people that are very skeptical about recycling, thinking things are still ending up in the landfill. And if we don't have separate opportunities to avoid contamination, I, I think we need to work with the land trash haulers. And we need to educate the public that these things don't, that recyclables won't end up in the landfill. I think we can go from nine to 46%. And I think we do it through education and, and separate programs. We do it through incentivizing our public. And I think we can hit that goal. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that Kathy brought up holding our landfill accountable because I think that's really important. And I would like to also make sure that we are receiving correct information about what's being recycled and what isn't. But one of the pieces within your question kind of answers itself because we're saying that these other counties have had great success with other programs and projects, including public facilities. So, you know, what are we not doing that they are doing? And can we kind of grab those programs? You know, in local government, oftentimes it's about being a leader. But other times it's about studying what's already out there, what's already been tried and tested. What is the best practice and how can we apply it right here in our communities? When it comes to waste diversion, I've always sort of seen these two issues as the big ones. One is food waste and the even bigger one and even more difficult, of course, is construction waste. So we talked about food waste. I think there's some really promising programs going on around composting in the private sector. I personally composted have for my entire life and I wish everybody would. I think that would be a good way for us to start is, is taking those types of personal actions at home, but also working with the restaurants. And, you know, we've had fits and starts in this regard. It's very difficult. Construction waste is probably the biggest problem that I see every single day. And as we are developing, growing at the pace that we are, it is only getting worse, not better. The city and the county have a shared building department. And I know there have been efforts made in the past to engage with construction contractors and try to do better with these practices. I think if we could be a little bit more progressive in the way that we engage contractors and be a little bit more collaborative in terms of connecting them, the organizations like YVSC that they might be able to even contract with, much like YVSC did the Zero Waste Program at the Free Concerts. Maybe we could start getting a little closer to that goal. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Irene Avitia. I'm the Early Childhood Education Specialist for Integrated Community. So this next question comes from CIIC. And it will start with Sonia and then Kathy. What are your plans to increase public transportation across our county in order to reduce air pollution and improve the quality of life for all Route County residents? And how would you ensure all community members have access to the information and resources on this subject regardless of their native language?
And we'll start. Thank you for the question. This is an item that I'm very passionate about. I believe strongly in developing a regional transportation authority. And I've seen it be successful in other places where I've lived. And really, what does a regional transportation authority looks, look like? It looks like what we're doing right now, which is studying the needs in all of the different communities, coming up with the package that people may want to vote for because it actually meets the needs of the community and then taking it to the voters. I've been really clear in my presentations that I'd like to see this regional transportation authority get through and be passed by the voters. And I'd like to see some big ideas in it, including repurposing our railway now that coal is no longer using it. More connectivity through core trails and that type of thing to get our commuters where they need to go. Greater connectivity with walking paths and for safety, human safety and wildlife safety, wildlife crossings and corridors. So when we think about developing this package, asking people what they need and trying to get people out of their single vehicle cars and off the road so that they can basically get their lives back, which is what you lose when you're commuting every day. We have to think about a public process to help people understand what is a regional transportation authority? What would a package include? Why should I vote for it? And as you mentioned, people need to hear that in their native language. I am a Spanish speaker, lived in Mexico for many years. And I know what it's like to be in a community where you're not speaking your primary language. And as good as people can speak the English language, it's always more comfortable and more inclusive to have information in your own language. So I think we would need to identify what are the languages, because it's not just Spanish, as we all know. And how do we engage the public by meeting them where they are? So using community groups like Integrated Community and others where people are going for resources to get the message out about this big idea of a regional transportation authority. Thank you.
Well, I would agree that a regional transportation authority is something that I'm very interested in. And we're doing a study right now. I can't wait to see what the recommendations are. And ultimately, it'll be up to the voters as to whether or not the plan that we as a community come up with is accepted and endorsed. But in the meantime, what can we do to increase transportation throughout our county? And I have suggested looking at the use of smaller vehicles, specifically shuttles, that the driver is not required to have a commercial driver's license. We, we tried this years ago and discontinued it. I think now is the time to go back and increase shuttle transportation to Oak Creek and South Route. In addition, we are seeing tremendous success in usage of our regional transportation system that Steamboat has between Craig, Hayden, and Steamboat. I would like to see that route increased. I think the demand is, is there. And public transportation, the key there is it needs to be frequent, predictable, and convenient. And last, the question about native language. Of course, Integrated Community does a terrific job, not only about Spanish speaking, but French, Russian, and, and other native visitors and residents that we have. So I would encourage the use in different languages, and I support that wholly. Thank you.
Thank you both. Kate Brocato here. I'm the Communications and Program Manager for YVSC. And I'll be asking this question on behalf of the Steamboat Springs Chamber who could not be here today. The updated Route County Master Plan states the need to focus on destination management. What does destination management mean to you? And what do you see the county's role being in destination management?
I think I'm first.
Sorry, I was, yes, Kathy, you're first.
Okay, thank you. Well, and it's been very interesting to see the evolution of destination management, starting not just at the chamber, but at the state level. And we now have a program at the chamber of Kindness Flots a Boat. The city has recently allocated money to its budget project, its budget project to allocate money for river, not river rangers, but community service officers that will focus on working with visitors to make sure they understand the importance of the Yampa River. I think the county, since it has, it doesn't have any specific land, significant land, it can have an education program and support financially the other programs. I don't think it needs to have a separate program. I think it needs to financially support the chamber, the city, and the state. Thank you.
So this is a difficult question. Destination management has been a new term that has been bandied about. And, you know, I guess what I would say is, I'm a social scientist. My master's degree is in natural resource, recreation, and tourism was the name of the department at Colorado State when I was there. So we just, we studied a great number of different types of user conflicts, visitor impacts. How do you mitigate those? And, you know, I guess what I'd say is, the first I learned of destination management was in the chamber, came to the city council some time ago and said, you know, we've reached our carrying capacity, which was, I almost fell off my chair. I mean, carrying capacity was sort of a dated term. We don't use it very much anymore. But I mean, basically, the acknowledgement that we have actually already started to love our community to death in terms of tourism. So I think destination management is an acknowledgement that we as a destination have become, we've reached our capacity. And how do we now manage for the natural growth that's going to come with just being popular, just word of mouth? And how do we make sure that it doesn't impact the people who live there and their quality of life? And, you know, this is to some degree a city question. But when you look at the county's role in it, I think the county has taken some really good steps that I would continue to support. For example, I was just up in North Route knocking doors yesterday. And one of the concerns and complaints is, with all of this increased recreational use, we've got snowmobilers parking up the entire road. Well, there aren't a lot of roads that are more than one lane. So that means, and they're legally allowed to do it. So they do it. So the county's gotten involved in helping to try to improve some of the trailhead so that people can park outside of regular neighborhoods. And I think that's a really good start to recognize, well, you know, we're bringing these people here. They're using our roads. They're going to need a place to go. Also, the county has a good role to play in the Mad Rabbit Process, the Route Recreation Roundtable, and making sure that we're always at the table when decisions are being made about expanding recreational use because it does have an impact on county residents, but also county roads.
Thank you both. I am next. My name is Carolina Manriquez. I am a forester with the Colorado State Forest Service. My question will be answered first by Sonia and then Kathy. Thank you both of you for being here, answering such important questions for a community. So according to the Route County Hazard Mitigation Plan, wildfire risk is the greatest threat to Route County. What kind of creative solutions do you propose to fund and expand urgently needed wildfire mitigation work knowing that almost half of the county's acres are privately owned? Sonia.
Well, thank you. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in, in fire management. But I do know that we have a Route County Fire Mitigation Council that came together not too terribly long ago to try to figure out how we could be more resilient and adaptable for the impacts of wildfire. One of the things that I'll say is that we are fortunate that over the years, our firefighters have developed into a more collaborative unit. And I feel as though we're, we're prepared. That doesn't mean that we, it's not an answer to solving the problem or the threat. But I think we've worked over the years to build good, solid relationships. And that was something that I did also on the Fire Oversight Committee, is, is just really try to get people working together around this situation. One of the ideas that came up recently in conversation with somebody, again, in North Route, was what about the payment in lieu of taxes program? So that's the Rural School, Secure Rural Schools Act, basically where money comes back to communities that have a disproportionate amount of public land. It's then redistributed to those communities for what they see as needed improvements. Sometimes mostly on or around federal lands, but can be extrapolated into something that could protect communities off of federal lands. I was on that committee some time ago. We administered grant programs to improve the roads on Buff Pass. But the question was, was brought up, could we be using some of that pay and live, payment in lieu of taxes money for wildfire mitigation on the forest? The other thing that I think is really fascinating that has been discussed is the repurposing of the Hayden Power Plant. And there's been discussion about biomass. Well, from a, you know, from an electrical standpoint, and does that give you enough of what you need to replace that coal? Probably not, but it does resolve other problems that we have in the community regarding wildfire. So I would continue to support the collaboratives working together and also fully fund all of the fire protection districts to the degree that we have any authority as county commissioners. Thank you.
Well, when I was on city council, I would ask the fire chief, what keeps you up at night? And he said wildfire risk specifically in the Fish Creek Falls area. And that's outside the city limits. The concern there is that's our watershed. And if we had a lightning strike up there and lost our water, the, we, we would be in a crisis situation. So we need to work with private property owners for wildfire mitigation, mitigation work. Just, for example, the Sanctuary has been very active through the Homeowners Association to mitigate a lot of the dead trees because of beetle kill. And we need to continue working with private property owners and collaborate and bring together federal funds and state funds that are currently available. The question is about private property, about 50% of the, the county is private. But the other 50% is state and federal owned. And I think we need to bring together and make sure we're working with the federal agencies and state agencies to do fire mitigation throughout the county. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Ben Bell, President of Friends of the Yampa. Thank you to Sonia and Kathy. Those of us at Friends of the Yampa look forward to working with either of you in the coming years at the county level to protect and enhance the integrity of our streams and waterways. You've touched on, on this in some of your previous responses. Perhaps you can expand on the ideas that you've shared. Our question to you, in your words, how do you view the importance of the Yampa River? And what specifically will you do during your term to protect and enhance river health as an environmental resource that supports agriculture, recreation, economy, and quality of life? Kathy, to you first.
Thanks, Ben. You know, I'm reminded of the movie, A River Runs Through It. And we have a beautiful natural resource, the Yampa River. It runs through our county. It runs through the city of Steamboat Springs, Hayden, and Downriver. This is a community resource that we love and we need to protect. And my concerns are, one, water quality. We do a lot of testing. I need, I would bring together the ag community, the recreational community, and, and make sure that we are protecting the water quality. And the other is the water quantity so that we can have active recreational usage. Active recreational use, usage supports a viable economic impact that the Yampa has. So, and overall quality of life. As was stated earlier, when you come down off Rabbit Ears Pass and you see this beautiful valley, what you will also see is the Yampa River as it begins to flow through the valley. And so it adds to the quality of life. I would be a commissioner that would protect the river and make sure that our policies are proactive. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for the question, Ben. I don't even really know where to begin with this one because, you know, even on my website, I described that the Yampa River was one of the major draws to being here, being able to just bike commute on the Yampa River, one of the last free flowing rivers, as we've called it for so long. It's just, it's a really incredible opportunity. Having moved here from Arizona, I know what the Colorado River looks like when it leaves us. And I've seen it all the way down to Mexico. And we can be proud and privileged to be at the top of the watershed. And I always tell people when they come visit, don't worry about drinking out of the tap, the top of the watershed. It hasn't been anywhere else. So I just feel very personally attached to the Yampa River. And I think it brings us all together because there's always something for somebody, whether it's fishing or tubing or getting out on your boat or paddle boarding or just, you know, checking it out, running your dog. I mean, really, it's our community. So, you know, what are we doing is the same thing I've always been doing is looking to protect our western water resources. We don't want any trans mountain diversions. I'll be looking to advance the goals of the Colorado Water Plan, which include the Yampa River. I will be looking to continue to support the efforts that are going to increase, well, decrease temperatures and potentially increase flows. And we've described some of those things, like the strategic releases, like the shading programs. And really importantly, I'll make sure that the county is not just good, but the best at its wastewater treatment plants, bringing them up to a quality. bringing them up to a quality that we can be really proud of as we look at returning those return flows to the river. We don't have control over a lot, but the things that we do have control over and where they're related to the Yampa River, we need to lean in and protect and defend that precious resource that really does bring this whole community together.
Great. Thank you both so much. And thank you all for being here for this important conversation. We did a great job with tracking time, so we do have the opportunity to put on some bonus questions, which is always exciting. So I really want to reiterate, I think, what all of the partners have mentioned each time that they've introduced these questions, which is thank you both Sonia and Kathy for your willingness to participate in this conversation and to be here with us. You know, there are many benefits to having this conversation, but importantly, it puts us all at the table and says, however, you know, the election moves forward, we're going to have to do this in partnership. So it's an opportunity for all partners that are working in environment and sustainability related work to elevate the questions and the issues that are most salient to us and then have the opportunity for you to respond to those questions in a candid way. So this question, I'm going to bring us back to the Climate Action Plan. What is significant about both of you as candidates is you come to this position, you know, to, to move forward as a potential Route County Commissioner, having served at City of Steamboat Springs City Council for many years. So this is a question to get you to reflect a little bit on maybe your approach and your insights and experiences that you've gleaned via your years in service at city council and how you would draw from those and bring them into service in Route County as stepping forth as county commissioner. So both of you know that the Route County Climate Action Plan has been adopted and it's now in the process of being implemented. An intergovernmental agreement was created between Route County, City of Steamboat Springs and the towns of Hayden, Oak Creek and Yampa. So the intergovernmental agreement has said that all governments are going to work together to move forward on the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. As I'm sure you know, that is going to be a challenge and an opportunity. And so this question is to both of you to alternate response order. We'll start with Sonia and then go to Kathy. But what do you see as the most important things to keep in mind to implement the Climate Action Plan, knowing that it's anchored on, you know, the effort to really increase collaboration with different governments? So how do you move forward on Climate Action Plan implementation with it being a plan of importance? And what would be your approach to process? So how would you try to implement it, you know, via these ongoing decisions that might not always be within the stovepipe focused area of climate action per se? But how would you find that intersection with the other decisions that are ongoing? So first part is how would you move forward on the implementation of the Route County Climate Action Plan, knowing that it's anchored in intergovernmental agreement and collaboration? And secondly, what would be your process to really trying to elevate the Climate Action Plan with other decision making that's going on? So Sonia, if you could start us off.
Sure. Yeah, I really look forward to moving forward to the Climate Action Plan. As, as you know, it's built on two different greenhouse gas emission studies that we had to commission to convince people that climate was real, climate change was real, human caused, and that we know those origins of it. It's a little bit difficult for me to say how I specifically want to move forward because part of what I helped do when we established the plan and the implementation strategy is that we seated a committee. That was basically a committee of folks, community wide, representing different sectors to tell us from the ground up, what are the most impactful ways that we can implement the Climate Action Plan? So I would actually want to empower that committee to bring forward recommendations. I will say, that being said, we do need to immediately find a funding source for the Climate Action Plan. The Renewable Energy Mitigation Program is in the Climate Action Plan and it is specifically in there because it is a funding source that has been tapped into by many other communities successfully. And that if we're going to consider it, we need to do it now while the building market is still moving forward at a rapid, rapid pace. So as far as the process on it, you know, I think we need to let this, these committees do their good work and bring forward recommendations. I think we need to recognize that each community is at a different place. When we sat down as the steering committee for this Climate Action Plan, getting it together, Oak Creek was telling us, we're still burning coal, you know? And then we have other communities that are doing different things. So we need to be respectful of each municipality and the capacity that they have to implement solutions at the local level and not expect that all of us are going to move on the exact same items. We also need to recognize that the built environment and the transportation sector over the past two greenhouse gas emission studies have been the most, the biggest bang for our buck as to where we choose to work. And I think we need to be looking at that as we look at first steps towards implementation.
Great. Thank you, Sonia. And Kathy?
One of the things that struck me in the last couple of community surveys that we did in Steamboat is that clean air and clean water are number one and number two on the list of things that our citizens value the most. The second or third is, is safety, safe, safe, safe neighborhoods. As Sonia mentioned, we have already identified partners that will help implement the Climate Action Plan. And we need to let those partners do the things that they are committed to do. You've heard me express concerns about how we're going to pay for the Climate Action, Action Items and whether we have a dedicated funding source, but we need to find out what that plan's going to cost and a really good timeframe. We are seeing impacts that are beyond our control as a county. And I'm talking about things like a war in Europe that impacts energy prices and impacts availability. These are things that could disrupt that timeline. They're outside our control. So I would say we should look at high impact areas such as transportation in terms of how do we attain the goals in the Climate Action Plan? And we should seek federal dollars that would might help us, federal and state dollars to help supplement our county and city contributions.
Great. Thank you both for your responses there. And we still have, I think, probably time for thirty second, your final words. So thank you again for coming to this important conversation. And given kind of what you've heard is the range of issues, which is spanning a really broad range of environment and sustainability issues, we'd love to hear you tell us what energizes you most as you consider moving forward as Route County Commissioner, given this landscape of environmental and sustainability issues. So we'll start with Kathy and then Sonia. And thirty seconds.
All right. Thank you very much. I am looking forward to making sure that Rab County continues to be a very attractive place to live. And that, as newcomers come to the community, we need to make sure that they understand that we have a community ethic of environmental priority. And we need to not only protect that, but expand it. So I would, I would say, working with the Sustainability Council and all of the other community, the partners that have been on the phone call today, I would say, let's keep working ahead and I know we can solve these big problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Sonia?
Well, what motivates me is how far we've come. I think we need to be further along and I think we need to be there faster. But we've all worked together very hard and slogged through a lot of things to get to where we are today. My life's work has been at the interface of people and the planet and generally asking people to do better with how we interact with the planet. So that's just the lens that I bring to every opportunity that I have and I will continue to do so. And as your Route County Commissioner, I will proudly lean into the Climate Action Plan and help ensure that we empower the collaborative and fund the collaborative and make sure that we move forward as quickly as possible on the things that we can do as a county to impact the climate action for the better today.
Great. Thank you both so much. Everyone, if we were in the room together, you'd hear lots of applause. And I just want to thank you both for your willingness to step forward into the service of the county. We appreciate your years of service thus far and it really is an honor to have candidates like you. So thank you for your time today. Thank you all the partners who have participated in this and for bringing these types of questions forward. And good luck and well, everyone have a wonderful day. Thank you again.
Thanks for the opportunity. See you guys.